Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Tuesday, February 6, 2024 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're excited to have you all. We have a great crowd here. We've got our special guests from Lewisville with us, and we'll introduce them here in just a second. At this time, I would like to remind everybody to turn off your cell phones. And I'd like to welcome Commissioner Bobby Mitchell to lead us in our invocation. And our pledges will be led by Lori Fickling, the president of the Lewisville Chamber of Commerce. So Commissioner Mitchell, if you'll please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Peace I leave with you, my peace I give you. I do not give to you as the world gives. Do not let your hearts be troubled, and do not be afraid. God, you offered us your peace, not the absence of chaos, but the presence of calm within the chaos. Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you, Lord, for last night's lying down and early this morning arising. Thank you, Lord, for touching us with the finger of love, letting us rise from our bedside to see this day we've never seen before. Lord, I give you the glory and honor and praises this morning, because you and you long are worthy to be praised. Lord, I lift you up and I magnify your name, because there is none like you. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity that you've given us, Lord, to come and gather together this day. Lord, I pray your blessings upon this meeting help us to engage in meaningful discussion, Lord Jesus. I pray for insight as we discuss this agenda, make decisions about the present and the future. Give us a fresh supply of strength, wisdom, to overcome difficulties, Lord. Find the best solution for each agenda item, Lord. Thank you for being a good, kind, loving God. Thank you for loving us, Lord, for making ways when we don't see no way, for opening doors that have been closed in our face, Lord, closing some of those doors that needed to be closed, Lord. I thank you, Lord, for our citizens this morning, Lord, who've come to this court, Lord. I ask if you touch each and every one of them, Lord. Bless their resources, Lord. In large those resources, Lord. Bless their families, Lord. You know what they need and how they need it, Lord. Thank you for our first responders, Lord, our law enforcement, our firefighters, our veterans, Lord, those that are sick, Lord, in hospital rooms, condescending rooms, sick rooms, Lord. I ask if you touch, heal, and deliver all over this earth, Lord. Lord, if ever was a time we need you, we need you right now, Lord. You are anchor, Lord Jesus. You are burden bearer. You are leaning post. Lord, we're leaning and depending on you, Lord. No other help we know, Lord. I know somebody might say this is a government court, Lord, but this is your court, Lord. And I lift you up and I magnify your name, because there is none like you, Lord. Have mercy on us right now, Lord. Cleanses from all unrighteousness, Lord. Fill us with your precious Holy Ghost, Lord. Have mercy, Lord Jesus. Thank you for being good, kind, and loving, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for looking beyond our faults and seeing our needs, Lord. Lord, give us discernment. Give us common sense, Lord, as we govern your people. Help us to lead, Lord, govern with integrity, Lord. Guard our hearts from pride, selfish gain, Lord, in the name of Jesus, Lord. We give you glory this morning. We give you honor and praises, Lord. Let everything be done decently and order according to your will, Lord. Let us lean on you, Lord, when things get too tough, Lord. I'm glad I have a leaning post, Lord, and that leaning post is for you, Lord. Thank you for all that you do. Bless this nation, Lord Jesus. Save this nation, Lord Jesus. Help us to do your will, Lord. Let everything be done according to your will. Not my will, but let your will be done. Lord, we lift you up this morning in this courtroom, every courtroom, all over the nation, Lord. Save, heal, and deliver in your son Jesus' name. Thank God. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Well, Lori, don't run off. It's we're glad to have you here today. Do you want to acknowledge our guests that we have with us today that are with your chamber?
Yes, thank you for letting us be here today. It is Denton County Day for our Leadership Lewisville class, and this is our classmates. If you can wave, stand up.
Y'all stand up.
Leadership Louisville class thirty-eight.
Wow, thirty-eight.
Yeah. We've got a full day planned, thanks to Commissioner Mitchell and her staff, and we appreciate that so much. Thanks for letting us be here.
It's great. We're glad to have you back here, part of our Denton County alumni. Did you want to say anything?
I just want to thank the Louisville leadership for being here, and thank you, April, for coordinating this. And Lori, thank you so much. All you participants, I was in the second Leadership Louisville class just a few years ago, and y'all have progressed so much more. You're doing so much more than I did. And I'm just thankful for all that you're doing, because I'm looking forward to one day you all governing the county, the city, and this nation, because I know you're learning a lot in Leadership Louisville, and all you're doing is waiting to put all that knowledge you have into action. So thank you for being here this morning.
Yeah, we're glad to have you. Did you want to say?
Sure. Yeah, well, I just want to thank you as well. It's I realize it's a it's quite a commitment, but it's well worth it. And I also represent some of Lewisville, so I'm very appreciative to see you all doing that. And good luck with everything and always here to help with anything you might need.
Very good. Good. And I think we'll see y'all after lunch sometime soon. So we'll visit with you all later today. Well, thank you all for being here. All right. Next, let's go to item one, which is for public input for items not listed on the agenda. And we have three people registered to comment, but only two want to speak today. So we have a first one is Mr. Willie Hudson.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Willie Hudson. I live at six twenty-three Newton. I went to visit Ms. Clark, who's she's ninety-one. And I talked to her about my situation that I'm dealing with, with the cemetery where the African Americans freed African Americans were living, but ran out of that camp, we think, by the Klan or their homesteads, Klan, and just took what they could take and had to leave. But they left the cemetery, and we're trying to have that cemetery refurbished, but we have not gotten it to where we think we should be at this point. One of the one of the main things is we need access. We can't get in there. It's all landlocked. The property was illegally taken from those people when they left, we believe. We're in the process of proving that more definitely. But I was visiting her, and she helped me see. She's a very devout lady. And she helped me to see. She said, you shouldn't look at what's going on at the court and and look at it as this negative, because they won't let you use the TV screens that we paid for, and that won't they won't put the items on the agenda so we can talk about them. She said, don't let that discourage you. You just have to remember there are good things that's happened to you. And I got to thinking, she's right. I've got I'm very blessed. Having my home is very important to me. It's paid for. That's very important to me. I have seven children. Only one is kind of still trying to find his way. The rest of them are doing quite well. I'm eighty-seven. I'm seventy, seventy-eight. Anyway, and I'm in pretty good health. I've had some physical problems and things, but I'm in pretty good health. I need to remember that, too. So I and she said, you got to trust in God to take care of this thing for you. And here's what she meant by that. Talk to you about the issues, but in love. Talk to you in love. She helped me see what does that mean? Well, I knew enough from listening to her that I've got a little ways to go. I got that down yet. I'm just going to talk to you as best I can. But I'm going to remember, I'm supposed to talk to you in love. I'll be working on that. We need access. We need to be on the agenda. And she said, that's all you do. You just tell them, and then God will take care of the rest. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. I love Ms. Clark.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we do, don't we?
Next is we had Janet Woodard, who registered, but who does not wish to speak. And next is Chelsea Stallings.
Good morning, Commissioners and Judge. My name is Chelsea Stallings. I live in Denton, Texas, seven six two oh one. I'm going to keep this short and sweet today. I'm still kind of upset after my interaction a couple weeks ago. So I will just say this is probably my sixth or seventh time here now with Mr. Hudson asking for access to the St. John Cemetery, going in with a gate code. I don't personally have it. I do have to go with Mr. Hudson, so it isn't open access like a public cemetery should be. So we are again asking for that to be an agenda item, so we can have an open discussion about that. The last thing I will say, February is Black History Month. I didn't hear anyone acknowledge that. It was first acknowledged in nineteen seventy-six by President Gerald Ford, so that is nationally recognized because every day, whether it's in Denton, Texas, or in the nation, Black history is American history. Thank you.
We do have a proclamation.
It's on the it's on the agenda that we're about to do a proclamation celebrating such. So thank you. You bet.
Oh, these people.
All right. Speaking of, let's go to item three A, approval of a proclamation recognizing February as Black History Month in Denton County and any appropriate action. Commissioner, did you want to read this? Or would you like me to? Would you like to read it?
I'll read it.
Okay, I got it right here.
Thank you, Judge.
All right.
You don't want to say and listen? Oh, okay. Thank you, Judge.
You bet.
This is a court proclamation recognizing Black History Month. Whereas in nineteen twenty-six, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a Harvard scholar, established the observance of African American history to reveal the contributions, achievements, and involvement of African American people in the development of our American democracy. And whereas the history of some of us is the history of all of us, and our history is what shaped us as a county, state, and nation. And whereas it is important to acknowledge and pay tribute to the generations of individuals who struggled with adversity, took great risks for justice, fought a seemingly impossible and uphill battle, and continue to fight for equality and the American dream. And whereas African Americans play a significant role in our communities as our friends, neighbors, scholars, teachers, businesspeople, community leaders, and contributors to our county's quality of life. And whereas the month of February gives us the chance to recognize and honor the many heroes who may be unknown and unnamed, and yet have contributed to the struggle for freedom and justice for all. And whereas Black History Month encourages us to come together, reflect on our bonding past, and behold its impact on present conditions. And whereas as a county, we continue to work together to guarantee equal opportunity for all individuals. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby recognize February as Black History Month in Denton County.
Perfect.
Done in open court this sixth day of February. Upon a motion by myself.
That's right. I just the chair was second. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries your name. So well, Commissioner, I want to thank you for for putting this on the the agenda, and it's it's every month should be Black History Month, you know, as we as we have special commemorative months.
That's right.
Throughout the year, but I think we should always be celebrating everyone. But this is a special time that we we do special tribute to accomplishments.
And Judge, I'm looking forward to one day that we won't have to recognize Black history, white history, Hispanic history, Asian history. We'll recognize American history.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to that day. And hopefully, hopefully, I'm alive to see it.
I do, too. All right. Did we vote? We have a motion. Could we complete the election? Is there anyone in it? Did we? Did you have any special guest, Commissioner, that you wanted to do a group picture with? Okay. All right. That's fine. That's fine. All right. Next, let's go to item sixteen A. We will go to sixteen A, which is approval of a proclamation honoring the life and service of Navy SEAL Nathan Gage Ingram and any appropriate action. And so I'll read this proclamation. This is a court proclamation honoring the life and service of Nathan Gage Ingram. Whereas U.S. Navy SEAL Special Warfare Operator Second Class Nathan Gage Ingram, twenty-seven, lost his life and service to his country during a night mission off the coast of Somalia on January the eleventh, twenty twenty-four. And whereas he attended Lakeview Elementary School, Medlin Middle School, and Byron Nelson High School, all of which are in the Northwest Independent School District located within Denton County. Whereas he graduated from Texas Tech University in August of twenty nineteen with a degree in kinesiology before entering the U.S. Navy in September twenty nineteen. And whereas Nathan was remembered by those who knew him best for his solid work ethic, sense of pride, dependability, and always putting others before himself. And whereas Governor Greg Abbott, the state of Texas, Texas Tech University, and many others have paid tribute to Gage Nathan Gage Ingram, and in Denton County, a special service has been planned to celebrate his life at the Northwest ISD Stadium at nineteen oh one Texan Drive in Justin, Texas. And now therefore, be it resolved that Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to the family of Nathan Gage Ingram our sincere and heartfelt condolences on his passing on January the eleventh, twenty twenty-four. We appreciate his dedication to serving his country, including Denton County, where he grew up and attended Northwest ISD schools. We will forever remember him. Done in open court this the sixth day of February twenty twenty-four, upon a motion made by Commissioner Edmondson, seconded by Commissioner Falconer. And this is such a loss. And we, you know, we're left speechless when we have a loss of such a young, vibrant life. And I just want to publicly thank him for his answering the call to public service. I talked about so many times, answering a noble call to public service and putting his life on the line, and for for American freedom and our interests here and abroad. And so we've been in touch with the family, and I know Mayor Garrish and our state representative and Senator Parker as well, Ben Baumgartner, our state rep. Everybody's been trying to nurture and love on the family, and I'm excited that they're having that public service. I know Commissioner Edmondson will be representing the county over there, and I know you could present this resolution of appreciation. So does anyone have any other comments? Okay. All right. Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Not to take anything away from this young man, the other three, uh, people that were killed by someone, Iran, the past few weeks, also all of our servicemen and women who are working so hard to protect us and continually get killed by terrorists. So I pray for this nation, I pray for this world that one day that we won't have to go through all this.
Amen. And you know, we see those headlines, but then when someone's lost right here in our own county, it just brings it close to home.
Does, that's right.
It puts a face with it and a name with it and a grieving family and a loss to the community. So thank you, did we vote? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. All right. We'll check that off. I was looking if there's other action here. Okay, members, let's just go, we'll go ahead and go back to item two. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda or do the motion to approve it as presented?
So moved.
Move a motion by Commissioner Falconer?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A. Approval of the order-making appointments and the appropriate action. Item two B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers. Item two C is approval of budgeting request one zero zero seven two zero for the Elections Administration Department to transfer two thousand five hundred dollars from the toner supplies to vehicle care to repair two vehicles that were damaged. Item two D is approval of budgeting request one zero zero seven six zero for the Public Health Department and Clinical Division to transfer ten thousand dollars from vaccines to administrative supplies to fund additional services needed for their language line, which provides video and phone translation services to the patients and to fund additional office supplies. We will come back to our two public hearings. Let's go to item five A. Approval of the bill report, payments from CSCD Community Corrections, TAIP Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture and, uh, VIT Interest Day Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have one addition today, it's to Citibank for two hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and forty-nine cents.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the amended bill report?
So move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. May. Next, let's go to item six A. Approval of award of ITB two-three-two-seven-nine-seven. This is fleet vehicles to Chastain Enterprises Houston LLC, Grapevine DCJ LLC, and Randall Reed's Prestige Ford and Triple Crown Ford Lincoln LLC and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Move a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B. Approval to declare miscellaneous equipment, office supplies, furniture, appliances, and tools as surplus advertised in place in online auction two-four-two-eight-zero-zero.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six C. Approval of, uh, of exemption to purchasing policy zero-three-two, item C, for a period of six months ending August the fifth, twenty twenty-four, for the purchase of vehicles up to seventy-five thousand each.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six D. Approval of specifications and authority to advertise for ITB two-three-two-seven-nine for Epilogue Fusion Pro forty-eight laser engraver. Any appropriate action?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six E. Approval of specifications and authority to advertise ITB two-three-two-seven-nine-five mowing lots and fields.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. I have a quick question for Scott. Can this, can the li- list be revised in the mid-contract if we decide to add and remove any properties to that?
Yes.
Thank you, that's what I, that's what I thought.
Question.
Good.
All right, we do have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six F. Approval of Evaluation Committee's recommendation to pre-qualified Teague Nolan Perkins, Quiddity Engineering, Lambstar Engineering, Half Associates Incorporated, Cop Finley and Associates, Lockwood Andrews and Newman Incorporated, Lena T. Ramey and Associates, Westwood Professional Services, Bridge Farm and Associates Incorporated, and Aguirre and Fields LP is the pre-qualified firms for RFPQ two-three-two-seven-six-eight Engineering Design Services as transportation and engineering.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? I would like to thank the Evaluation Committee, all their hours of, of work on that. That's a, that was a lot of proposals to review and I appreciate you making a professional recommendation.
Excuse me, Judge. Uh, Jim Carter has filled out a form to speak on this item.
Okay, good, I have not seen that. Okay, all right, Mr. Carter. Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Good, good to see you, Jim.
Thank you. Very briefly, I just want to thank, uh, the court, uh, the staff and the selection committee for complete, for putting half on both committees. Thank you very much.
Perfect, you bet, sir.
Welcome, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, we have a motion, a second, any other comments?
Thank our, uh, administrators for, this is their first time working on this and I, I think they did a great job. Except for Holly, thank you. She has worked on it before, so she knew, but the rest of them was, was, this was new to them. So, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. All right.
Appreciate all of you.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item six G. Approval of Evaluation Committee's recommendation to pre-qualify BGE Incorporated, EST Incorporated, LJA Engineering Incorporated, Teague Nolan Perkins, Westwood Professional Services Incorporated, CPNY Incorporated, Quiddity Engineering LLC, Lambstar Engineering, Aguirre and Fields LP, Half Associates Incorporated, Lena T. Ramey and Associates Incorporated, and Cop Finley and Associates Incorporated, Consort Engineers LLC, and Kimberly Horn and Associate, Associates Incorporated as a pre-qualified firms for RFPQ two-three-two-seven-six-seven, Trip Twenty-two On-System Projects and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all for your, um, submittals and, and for y'all being here today. Many of you are here with us today, so thank y'all for being here. Next is item seven A. Approval of budgeting request one zero zero seven three zero to transfer eighteen million nine hundred and two thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars from Permanent Improvement Fund, unappropriated contingency to Permanent Improvement Fund land for the farm and ranch contract for the purchase of one hundred and five point three-three acres fronting south side of Mylar Road and the east side of I thirty-five.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item eight A. A report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials is presented for recording purposes only.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one new hire in the district clerk, one rehire in the district clerk, one new hire in juvenile probation, one rehire in juvenile probation, two promotions in juvenile probation, six new hires in the sheriff's office, two rehires in the sheriff's office, four promotions in the sheriff's office, one demotion in the sheriff's office, one new hire in the tax office, and one lateral transfer in the tax office. That's it for this week. All those are detention officers once.
Excellent, perfect, good. There was a lot of detention officers, I was very pleased by that. Next is item eight B. Approval of the creation of a registered nurse pay grade twelve and the downgrade of slot zero-zero-one TS program coordinator, pay grade twelve to an administrative manager, pay grade nine in the Public Health Department.
I move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight C. Approval of the deletion of vacant slot zero-zero-two CV Communication Coordinator, pay grade seven, and vacant slot zero-zero-three CV Records Analyst One, pay grade six, and the creation of an assistant program coordinator, pay grade seven, slot zero-zero-four CV in the Public Health Department and any appropriate action.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item eight D. Approval of the re- proposed revisions and updated title of policy three point one-nine Mental Health Leave for Police Officers to Mental Health Leave for Peace Officers and Telecommunicators and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item eight E. This is approval of proposed revisions to Attachment A Denton County Civil Service Rules, excluded positions option one and option two, and we'll hand it off to Gustavo.
Judge, Commissioners, before you, um, I have presented two different lists.
Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Um, so I brought this to your attention two weeks ago. Commissioner Mitchell asked me to meet with some of the elected officials affected by this change, my, by the changes that I'm recommending. We have the discussion. Um, I understand their position of being able to, um, hire or let people go whenever they see the need. Um, again, my recommendation is that we reduce the number of people excluded from civil service to basically anybody who reports directly to the elected official. That would be option one. I don't know if you have any questions? So please let me know.
Uh, I have a question. I would, and I don't think, maybe this has been provided, I don't know that, that it has. Like, where's the criteria that, to put people on this list or remove this list? Like, where's our Denton County criteria that we have? That we could, that your office could look to for a recommendation? And where's, for, to guide the court?
So my recommendation is based on the local government code, Subchapter one fifty-eight, in which basically allows the creation of the civil service system. Um, there was discussion in two thousand and twelve about who should or shouldn't be included in this list.
Right.
At the time, in two thousand and twelve, the Commissioners Court decided to go with the list that is in effect. Um, my interpretation of the code tells me that we have too many people excluded from civil service. Um, so the criteria, basically, the code tells us who should and who shouldn't be. Now, the interpretation is, is, is the issue here.
Right.
And my belief is that what I'm presenting to you will reduce the exposure of the county to any possible legal challenges.
Judge?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so I was, I was pretty involved in, in this and discussions, obviously, with other elected officials. Um, and Gustavo is correct. It is left up to interpretation. Um, the code doesn't specifically say, doesn't give you titles and things of that nature. It leaves it up to somewhat of discretion of who and what. I think it is reasonably clear what that alignment is. Um, but we've been doing it option two, basically, for, since two thousand and twelve, the last time. Uh, from what I understand, we've had no legal entitlements and we're not the only county. I, I asked to check in other counties to see what other counties do and it's primarily up to the Commissioners Court to decide what that, the parameters are and what it looks like. Um, I don't think we're out of line going with option two. We're definitely not out of line going with option one.
Right.
The option two is, is definitely a little more broad than, um, than possibly what is, um, what is stated. But that's not uncommon for other counties. When, when looking at other counties, there's other counties that have done similar things. And so, uh, really what this is, is an updated version because there's some classification changes that were made. So we needed to add a couple. If you'll look at option two, there's, there's, the red writing is the areas that we needed to add. And it had nothing to do with adding additional. It was adding because we had new hires that we've, or positions that we've opened that we never had in two thousand and twelve. So if you see the red, that's what that, that is either a reclass of a person because we changed the title, or it's a brand-new employee title for Denton County, if that makes sense. So, um, hopefully I shed a little bit more light on it.
Gustavo, is your op, your, uh, recommendation option two?
One.
My recommendation is option one.
Option one, that's what I thought, okay.
Which is quite a bit more narrow, obviously, than option two.
Well, I look at like under twelve there, says project administrator. I don't know why that is on this list when there's other function. I don't know what the criteria would be to add that to this option two list. That's why I'm asking for, is there a criteria involved? I don't, I don't see, I don't see what that would be. And there's other similar type positions across the county that I would not see listed on here.
Judge, if I'm, uh, on option two, the, my line of thinking on that is if we are gonna stay with this list, option two, uh, since most departments are going all the way down to second level in the office, that is the reason that I include that position. There is no other reason.
I don't. But I would think that there's other second-level people in the county.
Well, I, yeah, I would.
I think we got them all. Did we not get all the second level? Gustavo, which is?
For the mo- for the most part, yes.
Well, the most part isn't, isn't a complete list.
Huh?
Well, if he says the most part.
Yeah, well, like, I, I mean, I don't, so, Jody's pointing out community, community relations. I don't know if there is a second level in that office.
No, there's not, that's a direct report to us.
That is, that is why I didn't put anybody.
And it's a direct report to us.
And I, and I, I think that the size of a department might have some bearing on some of that too, right? Is that if you have, there are four people in a department, the second level means a lot different than if you have, you know, hundreds and there's multiple levels. I, my, my struggle on this one, quite frankly, is that, um, is, is less about our, our, the reports for us. I'd be fine with option one for that, but we are making a decision for other elected officials who clearly have different situations. And I think, and I think some, some, all of us, some of us have talked with those and they have some very clear, um, feelings about that and, and back to their, their thoughts about these are essentially direct reports, ones that they meet with and deal with on a very much a daily aspect. And, um, if it's technically, I think that's where the interpretation of that law comes in, is that who is actually a direct report and it's a little gray. And, and by the way, I don't think that the other counties that have been doing, some of these counties have been doing this for a long time, right?
Many decades.
I don't think there's been any concerns with that. But I'd be more than happy to, 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 to potentially take some of those off that are in kind of more our domain. Um, but I do think that the, of option two, I do think that it's those that are, the other elected officials that have expressed their concerns and.
Yeah, the three, the, the, the three elected officials that, the main three I met with that majority of their employees would be affected, all, uh, had a consensus of option two. And so, um, I just want to make sure I put that out there, that that is the consensus.
Two.
Was the consensus.
I'll, I'll just say, I don't think it's a complete list.
Probably not, we can add on to it, Judge, that's, but take some off. Probably not. We can add on to it, Judge. Let's, let's take some off.
You look at the, you know, emergency management, there's second in lines there.
What, what number is that?
Seventeen. I mean, so I don't, I don't think that's complete. The veteran service, there's second commands there.
Well, in the veteran services, they are, and that is the problem. And that is why I'm not recommending that list. Because where do you draw the line? Where, how lo, how, how far down do you go? That is, that is.
Right, because we don't have a criteria.
Yes.
It's very, this process is very subjective. And so we don't have a criteria, is what I'm saying. And so emergency management has second commands. They have, they have assistants. I think it's even in their job title, isn't it not? And so that's an assistant, and it's even in the job title, and it's not listed on here. And that's the methodologies if they're an assistant. And then I didn't pack up the assistants on the list. So, and, and the veteran service officers, so.
If you look at sixteen, Judge, emergency services, you can see where assistant directed emergency services was on there at one point. The, the black line through it, I guess, is, those are the ones that have been taken off at some point in time, for whatever reason.
But on option two, we're adding more people. In the spirit of adding these people, and then you're deleting them, and then you're not extending that to other departments.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
But the HR.
The, obviously, we can come up with a policy. I think we have to be.
Emergency, emergency services deleted on both sheets, so I don't, I don't.
No, no, it's on, yeah, they call it emergency management now.
It's a title.
And what?
So, so we created two departments. Before it was emergency management and fire marshal's office. Now those are actually three different because we also created the development services office, fire marshal's office, and then emergency management.
So basically, we went from having, if you recall, we went from having one department that covered all those areas, and then we broke it up to three. I think that was in 2020. So now that's why those are listed more, or that's why those, the ones in red are listed, because they're trying to cover those areas now.
Sure. I mean, they're being addressed because of the reorganization.
Yes, sir.
I'm just saying that I, I think it's inconsistent here, is what my point is.
This list can, can be added to or taken from.
At any point in time.
So as.
At our discretion.
At our discretion. I think we pass whichever one you all want to pass today, and then we take a deeper dive. And I think Gustavo has talked to other counties, and they're all over the place.
That's correct.
Because it's discretion, of course, of the Commissioners' Court.
And that is the issue.
We're all over the place.
The, the issue really is interpretation of the code.
Right.
Yeah.
There are four specific titles, if you will, that are really clear on the code. But then there is another code that will affect the court's people. Then you have counties that do it this way, counties do it a completely different way. So it really is a matter of interpretation.
Yes.
And at this point, it will be really what the Commissioners' Court, Commissioners' Court want to do.
I mean, I think it's important to probably consult our civil service commission and talk to them, since they're, they're charged with doing that. Has, has that happened?
So when we presented to the civil service commission, basically, they just received the list, and they will, they will approve the list. It would be based on our recommendation.
Which comes from us.
And Judge, you are right. There are some positions that technically you could see as second-in-command. I went by, okay, who, who report? So in my office, I have my assistant. So that is what I, I use as, as the guide of which other departments have this same situation. And when there is a department that has two different division managers or assistants, I didn't go that down, that low. Because that is, again, it creates the issue of how far do you go? Where do you stop of excluding people from civil service? And again, civil service really is the process that the department heads, elected official supervisors got to go through in order to discipline an employee. It's not preventing anybody from.
Being fired.
Releasing someone.
That's right.
Yeah. No, you can release, I mean, you can make that decision anytime you want to, whether they, you know, decide to go through the civil service route and contend it. They can, which is, that's what it's really about. That's the difference.
Shouldn't be, shouldn't be releasing people anyway unless you've got a, a reason.
Well, and that's what civil service says. You, you should have a reason to terminate people. And, and that is why I, my recommendation is let's reduce the number of people excluded from civil service. So they get that protection.
I do think, and I agree, like I said, this is, I, I can argue option one or two or in between. But I do think the whole, we have a, a bit of an interesting situation in the county because we have so many elected officials. And elected officials, I think that I can easily imagine times where someone who is a direct report very close, who may be, there may be philosophical differences that have nothing, like, that you couldn't, you couldn't necessarily come up in a civil service thing and say, well, this is why. But things that you need to have someone who aligns better with your viewpoint. And so that's, those are the things that I think make this more difficult. And not necessarily using that to say one or the other, but it's, it's, it's not quite as simple as just a normal private sector situation.
Well, and to your point, Commissioner, a couple of the, the concerns and the points that were made to Gustavo and myself when we met with some of the elected officials was exactly that. If that elected official retires or is, is unfortunately beat, then when that new elected official comes in, that new elected official needs to have the ability to get rid of X amount of employees that may or may not want to, you know, play nice with the new elected official. As we know, unfortunately, it's a political world that, that we live in in the county. And that's just reality. It's, you know, in the, in the private sector, that's exactly what happens. A new CEO comes in, and then usually their team follows. That's very common, and it's, and it's not uncommon in this world. Occasionally, elected officials will keep some folks because they're the best option for the, the, the team, and they're gonna align with the new elected official. So that was probably one of the largest concerns that the elected officials I met with had, and, and I couldn't disagree with that. Being an elected official myself, I would hate to come into office and be forced to utilize the person that was in my, you know, my, the processor that I follow. That would be a rough, could be a rough game. So, and, and not only the person that is right next to them, but the next one below was the other, was brought up, so.
And if I might, just to be clear, I think that all the elected officials and department heads kind of follow the process of civil service because there is no one elected official that comes and fires people just because. They tend to go through the steps of coaching the employee, giving the chance of improve your performance. So I want them very clear that there is no situation in which the elected official came and fired people because that hasn't happened.
What if they wanted to?
And when people are hired on, they need to be given the information as to how their lives are gonna be affected. And they choose to, even if somebody knew coming to the department, we still have to give our opinion of how we're gonna run our offices, our goals for the offices. And if someone cannot or will not accept that, then they will have the opportunity to leave rather than us firing them.
Well, I'd say the county does a really good job trying to find positions elsewhere within the county for an individual that may not be able to work with their elected official. I think we've done a really good job with that, from what I can tell.
Has the, Gustavo, has this, these two options gone out to all the, there's lots of departments on here? And elected officials, has this got, these two options gone out to all of them to get input from everybody, all this, all the stakeholders?
No, sir. The only ones I talked to is the county clerk, district clerk, and the tax office, which are the ones that today have a third level of employees that could be affected by this. If we were to do option one, it's really not changing anybody besides, I, I mean, more people would be included under civil service protection. But no, I have not talked to everyone in the county.
Well, I thought we talked about that. We did talk about that. Because of that, I, I am not supportive of any of these revisions today. But you are welcome to go ahead and talk.
You know, I, I can support either one of them. If you'd like to hold it for another week, Judge, I don't have a problem with that. For Gustavo, for us to send a letter out to the other elected officials?
Well, and actually, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I actually did talk to several department heads, and they are all, all okay with my recommendation of adding their assistants to civil service protection. Several of the.
Excluded.
No excluding, just remove them from this list. So actually, I did talk to several department heads that were okay with that.
Okay.
They felt comfortable with that.
With option one, basically.
On option one.
For one, which is minor edits, correct?
Well, option one actually changes, it would take the scope of people not covered and tighten that where there's a lot more covered versus option two. Option two leaves it where we are and then adds in some of the new positions that we've, we've added. Yes. It's more, it's more, gives us more latitude.
We can change this or leave it.
So I, I, yeah. I've got no problem going with option two. And, and Judge, it's just because I've been so, whether that's good or bad, involved in listening to these discussions and been involved in the discussions. It's the only reason. I mean, I can appreciate your position because you haven't been, and I can appreciate that, so.
Okay, so.
I mean, do we want to hear from any of the other elected officials that are here? That would, either one of the two that I've met with, would they like to have something to say?
Is anyone here?
I don't know if they want to speak.
Ms. French is here. Either one of you ladies like to?
I don't know if they had the same, I don't know if they had the, this is our tax assessor-collector, Mrs. French. Good morning.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, but since you're here, you know.
That's all right. That's right. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We did have a very robust discussion. And I won't speak for, for our county clerk, Julie Luke, but we did have a robust discussion about this. I can argue both sides of the coin. I absolutely can. On the one hand, the statute appears to be very clear. On the other hand, I do recognize the fact that as someone who is retiring, that, you know, whoever comes in, they should have the ability to choose their staff. With that being said, I will go on record, with that being said, in our county, I don't know about all the other departments, but I know in my department, the people who are in place now are the ones who they, they hold the keys to the kingdom.
Yeah.
And they know the job. And it's gonna be up to them to help teach and train the next person coming in. So I can argue that, yes, the statute seems to be the statute, but I can also argue that, you know, I, I can see the side of both our, our county clerk and our district clerk, too. So I'm good with either one, myself.
Thank you, Ms. French.
We, we did have a very robust discussion. That's, that is accurate. And I can say, walking into office in 2015, it was not a warm, fuzzy transition. There was an employee, it was a supervisory position that was there that was problematic. It was recently promoted, like, weeks before I took office. And I don't know how long that process was.
Usually, a civil service process between the moment you start disciplining the employee to a hearing can take two, three, four months.
Yeah, or longer.
This was upwards of nine months to eliminate this, this hurdle that was placed in, in my way. I can only imagine if that was a management position. You know, just the effect, the trickle-down effect on the office. I just think it's something to really consider for those management positions.
So what is your preference on this?
Option two. Yes, ma'am.
And you're not removing people just to be removing them, removing them for a reason?
No, I, I think it's clear in my time in office, yes, there, there is a reason. It's either a different philosophy or it's, it.
Yeah.
Nobody's trying to eliminate the knowledge base that's there.
Yeah, but if you have a rogue employee, they need to go. That's all there is to it.
That's all there is to it.
Because they cause issues and delays, which is a problem.
And when that rogue employee is in a management position, the trickle-down is, is huge. And I'm not speaking for the district clerk, but we are, we are in agreement.
No, I, I may mention that.
And it was safe to say, yes, he did say that I could, I could say that we are aligned in that position.
Good.
Okay, thank you, ladies. I really appreciate both of you. Thank you all for, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
All right, members, is, is there anyone else in attendance who would like to speak on the issue? Members, is there any other?
Judge, did you have a wish to hold it or?
Well.
Gustavo wanted it, but if not, we can move on.
What's that?
I said, either way, I'll move to approve or I'll move to hold.
I just don't think, I think we need to have a criteria that's clearly identified, that all the parties can look to, 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 to look for. And so that's remove some of the subjectivity out of the process. I mean, I think that, that would, that'd make it the whole process easier. So the elected officials could look to that, and as they go through, and the department heads, in a collaborative way, and make sure that we, we have that. I would, I think we ought to have consultation with the civil service commission. I don't know if that happened. I don't know that the others follow the department heads, and everybody on that list got this, these two option ones and twos, you know, and so.
This is already on the, option one, basically.
Option two is already what we have.
There's nothing change, it's nothing changing really.
We're just making some.
Two is adding, option two is adding people.
Yeah, adding.
We're adding positions that have been newly created, for sure, over the last, since 2012.
Correct.
What else is added that wasn't on there before?
There are new job titles, there are new departments that for reorgs, for a split of the department, they were, they are new to the, to the county, right? So we, we are adding them. Now, I will need the guidance from the court if you want to create a criteria. I mean, how low do you want to go? Because that is the issue, is where, where do you, where do you stop if you want to start excluding people from civil service?
Yeah. And, and I think we have to be cautious on what we do put together. I would ask Matt his opinion, but I don't think that's the best idea at this point. So, you know, if you, either, any of you would like to contact Matt, he can give you their opinion as well.
Our legal counsel.
Legal.
Well, of course, yes, we can always do that.
Yeah, you can call Matt Rich.
I mean, I just, there's.
Let's leave it as it is. No, let's do option one.
Right. Option two.
Do we have to do this to?
No, no, option two is what we mainly have now. Option one is narrowing it back down.
Option one is, option one is reducing the number of people excluded from civil service. Option two is to keep the list that we have today, plus adding new, new departments, new positions.
New departments based on what we've added ourselves, not because they didn't exist in 2012.
Right, it's a, it's just an administrative cleanup.
Yeah, that's exactly.
So, so Julie, you have, Julie, you have all five of these existing on option two? You, all of those?
Yes, sir.
All those are existing, covered, or existing?
Some of them are name changes, I think.
On the county clerk's situation, they used to be called department managers. But two of them got reclassed, and they have new job titles. So that is the two new job titles that you see on option two.
So we've reclassified them, giving them more responsibility and more compensation, but they dropped off the list.
So she's captured, we're recapturing those folks that were originally on it, and just because there was a reclass and a new title, their, their title was not under, was not listed on here.
That is correct.
And that's really what we're doing. Again, it's just cleanup, which will continue, you know, throughout the years, anytime we do add or, you know, a job title.
And, and that would be another recommendation I will ask from the court to allow me to update the list whenever there is a reclass of somebody who is already covered by civil service to a higher-level position to keep that person excluded from civil service.
Right.
I'm just.
So this is a working document?
That is correct.
Well, it hasn't been updated since 2012, so it's not frequently refreshed. That's why I think we need to get it done.
But it can be if someone asks for it to be refreshed. And I'm, 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 we're, we just keep arguing about what, what, and all we have to do is go ahead and approve this list. And I'm making a motion to approve option two.
And I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by, with a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Williams. When I'm looking at a glaring edit here that I think should be addressed today, I'm not gonna support it on the emergency, on emergency management. Because there's second-in-command, there's.
Bring it back.
I'm curious why we wouldn't do it today, why we have a sec, well.
What do you, what do you need, what do you want to do?
I mean, veteran service officers, they have, through Gustavo's own criteria, if it's second-in-command, why would we not do that for emergency management?
They only have lower-level employees. They, they really don't have a second-in-command.
Which one?
Veteran services.
Okay. But what about emergency man, I, I disagree with you if you're doing the other one.
The job titles on the emergency management, they are division managers, and that is why I didn't include them. Those are the job titles we have in the system, division. Those are the job titles we have in the system, division managers, no assistant directors, it's division managers.
I'm real and clear why, why, they would not.
But they could.
Clerk Luke, all hers, all these second in commands with these divisions.
Right.
Are department managers are covered, and then your emergency management is not, and those are, they have multiple employees underneath them, there's a glaring inconsistency here.
And so what we can do, uh, Judge, is ask to have it added as of today and vote on that.
Yeah, just make a modification.
Yeah, make a modification to it, because like, it's a, it's a working document.
And I'm open, I'm open to a change.
Well, then, then.
Do you want to amend your motion to?
Yes. Go ahead, Ms. Mitchell.
I really don't want to amend my motion, but.
Oh, you don't have to.
I will, in the spirit, in the spirit of.
Go ahead and do it.
In the spirit of cooperation, I will amend my, I will amend my motion for further, uh.
No, you want to add?
Yeah.
So to add, uh, under emergency management, um, a, the second level, if you will, which is.
I'll amend my motion, okay.
I'm not sure what, what, what did you say they're called?
Division managers.
Division managers, to add division managers.
If you're doing it for the clerks, why would you not do it for this?
It's, you. Okay, I'm in my motion, is the second amended?
Yes.
Okay.
I second that.
All right, we have a.
Did you get it, Gustavo?
A motion.
We are adding division managers to emergency management.
Yeah. Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Actually, Judge, I'm sorry, so, uh, on facilities department, they have an assistant director slot open.
And when, and when that's filled, that should be.
I mean, it, it is in existence.
That's, that, that's a vacant position, it's a non, it's a.
So we, you don't want to do division managers on that department, do you?
Well, I would think if you're.
I already have an assistant director.
Because that technically, if you have an assistant director, there would be the third in line.
Which is what we're doing in some others.
That's a dormant, that position was technically removed.
Oh, I see.
When, when we reorganized the department, so then, see, they're going, now you got, same thing goes with facilities as is for emergency management, as it is for the county clerk.
Sure.
And they're not on here.
Are we suggesting that we take the assistant director off and then add the division managers?
Yeah, because there's no such thing.
Because there's no.
They don't have that anymore, they, it's been re, renamed.
Is that, I guess, the people making the motion need to make that?
And be, before you do make the motion.
Then we'll keep on, y'all will remove my motion.
So, so now, uh, it, it comes up, the, uh, division managers in the health department. Do you want to exclude them too?
So here's what we're going to do, okay, because we can do this, we can continue doing this all day long.
Yeah.
Hold on, man, I make the motion, I am going to remove my motion. And if you all want to start over.
Because I'm not going to argue and change motions all day long.
All right, that's exactly right.
Can we not just remove, can we not just work with staff and clean this list up this week and bring it back next week?
I asked you if you wanted to hold this another week, if you want to hold it another week, I will honor that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll remove my second.
All right.
Okay.
We'll readdress this next week. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit testy this morning, so.
It's okay, drink more coffee.
Drink more coffee, okay.
Coffee, coffee, coffees. Well, if we can get it as close to, if we can get it as close, my philosophy is we can get it as close to, um, on the first time, I think that would be great.
Okay, I'm with you.
You understand your direction?
Because there's several.
You don't understand your direction?
I, I'm sorry, I was talking to you.
We'll have to give Gustavo the directions.
I think my, well, this is for me, I think it's important that we communicate with all the departments and all the elected officials about potent, potential changes as it may impact their staff, so I think that's number one, we've talked about that, I think that needs to happen.
And I think that's what we were doing the last time, I, that was my intention.
Understanding, right.
And based on the list that's here, that was accomplished, other than a couple others, the main body of people that were here, we had those discussions. Obviously, you contacted some via phone, and there's, for the most part, this doesn't affect some people and it does others. And some are like, I'm fine with the way it is now, so, I'm sure. So my suggestion would be you send an email out, so you have.
That was my suggestion the most.
Well, you have, uh, you have, uh, uh, proof, send it to every single person that needs to be sent to, and say, do you have any problem, and send them both of these and, and give them the, and say, ask if they have issues, okay?
And then I think that it would be nice to have a criteria established for what Ditten County, and we're different than other counties, that there's a, a criteria that is, that is used to, for y'all's office to make these recommendations to us. And so, in addition to the, um, statute, there's obviously local concerns and interests that have been expressed by the, uh, other office holders and the Commissioners Court, and so I think establishing a criteria would be great, and, and then I, um, and then clean up, uh, because there were several, two or three departments here that were not consistent, like emergency management and others that we, that I already noted for you. And so, public facilities is one, you know, we can't use, if that position is dormant, the assistant manager, that was, if that's dormant, you want to go to the second level, well, that, we all know that that position's not even there, so if that was sane, I don't want to go to the third level down, there's not a second level, so we, I think we need to clarify that. Okay, so I, I, that's what I would, and try to make that as consistent as possible across the board, and then we can make an informed and educated decision, that's what I would, I'd recommend. And I want to thank the court for y'all's thoughtful discussion as we work through this.
And Judge, one more thing.
Yes.
For my suggestion to you, um, Gustavo is, when you're, because I know in your mind, you're thinking, okay, well, the court has your direction on what we're going to establish the guidelines, you take based on option two, the guidelines that we've all kind of discussed, and that's how you'll make your, what I would consider your recommended guidelines, and I'll be happy to go over that with you as well. Okay?
Thank you.
And then I think after that, you send to all the court members and see if they, what they think. Okay, thank you, sir, thanks, Judge. And I do appreciate everybody's work on this, this has been a lot of work behind the scene, and thank you, uh, elected officials for your input as well.
Next is item 10A, approval of the Barrett Edition Final Platlots One and Two, Block One, this is 4.009 acres located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Commissioner, do you want to make a motion on your, do you want to make a motion on your plat?
She's got.
We have a plat in your, do you want to make a motion on your plat, on your 10A?
10A.
And I say.
A motion by Commissioner, if it's a second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next is item 10B, approval of the request to hold a public hearing on March the 12th, 2024, at 9:00 AM for the replat of Business Park Edition, this is Lot One R and Three R, Block A, this is 6.05 acres located in Commissioner Precinct Four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next is item 10C, approval of the request to hold a public hearing on March the 12th, 2024, at 9:00 AM for the cancellation of a portion of Elk Farms Phase One Plat, Lot 11, Block B and Lot One, Block C, located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next is 12A, approval of the renewal of the lease agreement between Ditten County and the Department of Army Corps of Engineers for the Lake Greavine Tower site and payment of the renewal fee, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next is item 12B, approval of the Ditten County Sheriff's Office program regarding issuance of a certificate of weapons proficiency for qualified retired law enforcement officers pursuant to Texas Occupations Code 1701.357.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next is 13A, approval of United Way of Ditten County Incorporated Fund request to fulfill the allocation of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-19, and any appropriate action.
Don't move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next is 13B, approval of the one notice of election for the March 5th, 2024 general, general primary election of the Democratic Party, and two, the notice of election for the March 5th, 2024 general primary election Republican Party, and any appropriate action. And we have Mr. Frank Phillips here, if anyone has any questions, otherwise the chair will move for approval. Chair will move, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next is, we'll go back to 13C at the end, I'm going to go ahead and get some of our guests out of the way that we have here today. I believe they're all here. Next is item 4A, this is a public hearing to consider and approve the advisability of the improvement and to determine the proposed establishment of the Green Meadows Public Improvement District, promotes the interests of the county pursuant, under and pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code on property situated within Ditten County, Texas, and Ditten County Commissioner Precinct One, to have a motion to open the public hearing.
To open, please.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, the chair will second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, we are in a public hearing, do we have anyone in, in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to, um, the creation of this Green Meadows Public Improvement District? Jody, did you want to speak about the, the establishment of it, or was there any staff comments, or Commissioner Williams, did you want to speak to it?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, hearing, no one in attendance speaking in favor or opposed to, we have a motion to close a public hearing by Commissioner Williams.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, all right, do we have a, do we have a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next is item 4B, this is a public hearing to consider and approve the advisability of the, of the improvement and to determine the proposed establishment of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District, promotes the interests of the county and, under and pursuant to provisions of the Chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code on property situated within Ditten County, Texas, and Ditten County Commissioner Precinct Four, we have a motion for approval to open a public hearing. We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, we are in a public hearing, is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the creation of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the creation of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District? Hearing none, we have a motion to close a public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, we do have a motion for approval of the, of the item, of the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District. We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank y'all. Next, let's go to item 14A, approval of change order number eight to the contract agreement for construction services between Ditten County, Texas and DDM Construction Corporation for the reconstruction of Hilltop Road due to additional work requested during the closeout of the project and to rectify underruns in bid items, and this is change order number eight, will not affect the current contract amount of $10,188,395 and any additional action, this is Commissioner Precinct Four. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next is 14B, approval of the amendment number 13 to the group policy number UHIC 600824, former policy number GA 70503 AL and A dash 730503 between United Healthcare Incorporated, policy insurer in Ditten County, Texas, a policyholder reflecting the excess loss insurance coverage premium rate and stop-loss limit for Ditten County Employee Benefits Plan year 2024. The chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next is 14C, approval renewal of number four, the consulting agreement between Ditten County, Texas and Devicon Incorporated for services as a commercial property manager to manage the obligations of Ditten County for a 15-year track known as Waterstone, located at the northwest corner of FM 423 in Lebanon City of Frisco in Texas. In Ditten County Commissioner Precinct Two, it'll cost $1,000 per month, totaling $12,000 per year, with funding to come from Auto Line, I'm 0153555096, any appropriate action?
We have approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next is 14D, approval of First Amendment to Addendum Number One to the Master Agreement for Professional Engineering Services between Ditten County, Texas, the Owner and Half Associates Incorporated for the HVAC Equipment Replacement Project, RFQ 22 dash 2679 MEP Services Mislanous Facilities in an amount of $19,750 with funding to come from the Permanent Improvement Fund, Repairs and Maintenance, Auto Line, item 8066009010, as recommended by the Ditten County Purchasing Director.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, let me make sure that we get everything. Bianca, did I, let me look here. Okay, let me go back. 13C, all right.
Oh, the grand jury.
This is the, yeah, I wanted to, I'll do that at the end of the meeting. What's that? This is approval of the drawing of names of the 2023 Grand Jury to serve on the Ditten County Salary Grievance Committee, and I need to drive, uh, non-primary and non-alternates, so here we go. First one is Terry Bridges, from Fort Worth, Texas, Ditten County. Second one is Alan Lou from the Colony. The third is Meredith Cone, uh, from Ditten, Texas. The fourth is Tiffany Dudas. The fifth is Rebecca Ars. The sixth is Mackenzie Lechtenberg from Carrollton, and Rebecca was from Frisco. And our seventh is Susan Romero from Corinth. The eighth is Mary Nolan from Trophy Club, and our ninth primary individual is Karen Davis from Carrollton. So those are the primaries. And then we'll draw, draw nine alternates according to the aid to the court's guidance, and this is Gail Harris from Oak Point. And then we have Wana Mora from Lake Dallas, is our second. And our third is Vanessa Wright from Lewisville. Our fourth is Daniel Stout from Little Elm. And our fifth is Bruce Loggie from Justin. The sixth is Robert DeRoser from Argyle. The seventh, here we go, is from Michael Smith from Crum. The eighth is Susan Johnson. And the ninth is Allison Brooks from Justin, if you'll come get these, Cheryl, I'll give them to you. Yeah, here's the primary. And then here's the alternates, and we did that for another year, okay?
Judge, does get, those folks get some kind of communication with a explanation, maybe?
They do, they do, they, they get a, she sends them a letter.
Very good, thank you.
She sends them a letter, and they, they notify that they, well, may or may not be called upon to serve. It would be later this summer, so she sent a detailed letter to each and every one of them, that's a great question. Did we get everything else? All right, uh, the chair will move to approve those names that were just, just previously drawn, with a second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, let's go to item 17, which is community updates, and we'll start with Commissioner Precinct One.
Thank you, Judge. Um, I have one, uh, the town of Prosper recently announced its Park and Recreation Department achieved the CAPRA, which is Commission, uh, for Accredited of Park and Recreation Agency Certificate. This is English, recognizes, shows Prosper's dedication to exceptional service to the community, and they spent three years and countless hours meeting this award requirement standard, so congratulations, uh, uh, to Prosper. That's all I've got, thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. So quite a few events in February, we've got, uh, in Carrollton, we have the Neighborhood Advisor Commission meeting at City Hall on February 8th at 6:30, there's a lot of neighborhood topics that will come up in that meeting, there's in downtown. There's in downtown Carrollton at the square, there's Sounds on the Square, February 9th, 5 to 7. Continuing the African-American Genealogy exhibit at the Josie Ranch Library, specifically February 10th at 10:30, which is a informative program. Hearts in Nature at the Elm Fork Nature Center in Carrollton, February 10th at noon. Chinese New Year Celebration, February 11th at 2:00 at the Hebron and Josie Library. And then in Frisco, Coffee with the Mayor, February 9th at the Frisco Discovery Center at 8:00 AM. Trick a Trout 2024. That sounds, yeah, you probably do have to trick them if you're going to catch them. February 10th, 8:00 AM at the Warren Sports Con, uh, Complex. And then in the Colony, as we're approaching Income Tax Day in a, in a bit, we have the income tax preparation at the Colony Library, February 6th, 10:30. And then appropriately Black History Month Celebration on the 10th at 10:00 AM at the Carrollton Public Library and the City Hall Annex, and that's all I have.
Perfect, great, thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
I have the Flowerman Farmers Market still going on, on, on Saturdays, every Sundays and Sundays, 10 to 2. Flowerman Public Library Spring Garden Series on the 12th at 7:00 PM. Fat Tuesday Party in Flowerman, Flowerman Senior Center on February 13th, 11:00 AM. Vida Income Tax Preparation in Lewisville at the library on February 8th, 4:00 PM, February 10th, 9:30 AM. Saturday Bird Walk, February 10th on Lewisville Lake Environmental Learning Area, Layla. Luna New Year on February 10th at, at the Thrive at Valley Parkway, and the Ribacur Cleanup on Jones Street in Lewisville on February 10th.
Perfect, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Edmondson.
Yes, we have some things in Precinct Four. First of all, there's a family Valentine's Day called Under the Sea, I'm not quite sure how that works, but it is a, a family thing, it's going to be at the Roanoke Rec Center on February 9th from 7 to 9. And then in Denton, we have a mobile recreation unit, Park and Play. It's going to be in Lake Forest Park, February 10th from 10:00 AM to noon, and then February 24th, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the MLK Rec Center. And now, last but not least, for all of you groovy golden agers, the Argyle Golden Agers are going to have a love fest, but it's a bingo party, it's not anything that we need to be keeping an eye on. But at any rate, it is a luncheon for groovy golden agers, this is where your best 60s flare to this event, and it's at the Argyle Town Hall. That's all I got.